This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Gengler?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Here. All those who wish to participate in the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work toward a common goal, we ask for your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police, our fire department, and city workers and hospital employees for their safety in the work they do. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, there are. We're going to put on the agenda swearing in two new police officers and then also add a resolution authorize a work session, study session on April 23rd.
I move we accept the additions to the agenda.
Second that.
Motion been made and seconded for the approval of the additions to the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Near on the approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda with the addition of the two previous items.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor to the approval, with the approval of the agenda with the additions, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next are the awards and proclamations. We want to do this first with the swearing of the, swearing in of the police officers.
Maybe second be at noon Friday?
Yes.
Well, you guys go first, saying it back to their, to their jobs and their responsibilities, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, the commission, thank you so much for the opportunity to come talk to you today. I have the honor of introducing two new police officers to the Ark City Police Department. So I'll tell you a little bit about each one of them. Rick Minnet applied for employment with us back in March of 2020. Originally from Derby, Kansas, but he spent the last 14 years in New Mexico. Rick has worked for the last 20 years as a graphic designer. Rick decided to answer the call to serve as a police officer. He saw the opportunity here as a way to move closer to family and serve a community near his hometown. Rick is married and has two children.
Hi, Rick.
Hi. Jeff Wilson applied for employment in June 2020. Jeff was raised in Winfield and graduated from Winfield High School. He joined the Marine Corps where he served for 13 years. Jeff wanted to join the Ark City Police Department to be part of community change and help show that law enforcement is here to help. Both Rick and Jeff have successfully completed a hiring process that included a written exam, interview board, executive interview, a very thorough background investigation, psychological testing, polygraph examination, physical capacity testing, medical exam, along with drug and alcohol screening tests. They are both slated to attend the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center later this month.
Where's that hail at? Is it Hutch or?
It's in Hutch.
Okay.
Yeah, south of Hutch.
Yoda.
At this time, I would ask the city clerk to administer the Oak of Honor for these two officers.
You guys would like to kind of just turn around so we can get you, the camera up right there, so maybe stand over there. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
Hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Kansas.
And the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, glad to have you here.
Welcome.
Welcome. Welcome to Ark City.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have a proclamation here. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species. Its multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas the monarch population has declined by approximately 90% since the 1990s, where the 90% of the grassland ecosystems along the monarch's migratory corridor have been lost. And whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help to save the monarch butterfly. And the city of Arkansas City wishes to play such a leadership role. And whereas each citizen of Arkansas City can make a difference for the monarch butterfly by planning native milkweed and nectar plans to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. And whereas on behalf of the people of Arkansas City, I am honored to be the second mayor to lead the way by resigning the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge. And I encourage other city officials across our great nation to take a stand with me so the monarch butterfly once again will flourish across the North American continent. Now therefore, I Scott Rogers, Mayor of the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 6, 2021, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to support efforts to help to restore milkweed and other summer breeding habitat for the monarch butterfly in the Arkansas City area. So these magnificent butterflies once again will flourish across the North American continent. I further call upon the citizens of Arkansas City to observe April 5 through 9, 2021 as National Wildlife Week in the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, and encourage all citizens and government agencies to consider implementing conservation efforts that will protect and improve the environment for the future well-being of our children and the wildlife we treasure. And I think Paisley's on board from the beautification board, correct? So, thank you. I know they, they've had several meetings with regards to this, so.
Yeah, I just want to say a quick thank you. It's really awesome that you guys are behind this effort. And it's going to be an exciting journey as we all move forward to bring some cool things into fruition.
Thanks Paisley. You guys having anything? Thank you. Are there any recognition of visitors? I don't see any. I would say there's no comments from the audience or anyone online? No. Next up, consent agenda.
I move we approve consent. The agenda is printed.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded for the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There's old business, onto new business.
Okay, first we consider approval of city insurance coverage for property liability vehicles and equipment.
So yes, it's up a little bit this year. Name drivers of that are there's some lawsuits that are currently the system. And that's, that's really kind of the big driver of the increase.
What is, refresh our memory, what is linebacker?
So that's the one that covers like the lawsuits, those types of things, protects.
Oh, okay.
Six.
You guys.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we haven't had this thing. I mean, I know we, a couple of years ago, I think we had it shopped out, you know, with different people, but. Yeah, well, we've got several things that's happened, you know, caused it to be a little higher than what it should. Yeah, I believe Kevin told me that they had shopped it, I believe last year or the year before. And. Yeah, I couldn't remember what it was. There's just not a lot of, there's not many companies in the market for, for cities. Yeah. EMC is the leader in that. What's your deductible on that?
Five on property, isn't it?
What's that, man?
Five on property, five thousand?
I don't recall. Yeah.
Five thousand?
Yeah.
I knew it had a five in it.
Well, this is the only proposal we have, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, it's EMC.
I will move that we approve the city insurance coverage for property liability vehicles and equipment as quoted in our agenda.
The second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve city insurance coverage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion.
Has this already expired, Randy? Are we in a grace parade?
Yeah, we are, I think April 4, from around, it was, first part of April is when it renewed, yes.
Yeah, it said.
Thanks, motion passes unanimously, on to the next item.
Consider the first reading of the ordinance authorizing the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, in conjunction with Kansas Unified School District 470, Cali County Community College, our Kansas City Recreation Commission, and A.C. Tennis Association to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement for the use and maintenance of tennis courts throughout Arkansas.
And this is Ben for everybody?
Right. You're, you're be the last group to approve it if you do. Larry worked on this agreement. Yeah. All the entities sat down and, and, and threw it, and Larry took, took all that disagreement together. So we, we basically all, each entity, $500 a year. And then all the golf, not golf courses, all the tennis courts in town are on a rotation of being, of a maintenance. I think it works out to be about every eight years, I took the tennis courts get. Well, everybody's paying their $3,500. If it goes in.
Thank you.
That's a good way to keep, make sure the courts get up kept. I mean, that's, that's, I like that.
I do too.
And it also lays out the fees that, that we charged for the indoor courts over at the Ag building. And. Who oversees the fees? That would be the tennis association. Okay. And do they turn that?
They haven't paid their fees in two years.
No, that's, that's not correct. They have paid their fees.
Are you sure?
Rec center, yes, I am. The rec center held that pending the contract. And that's something the city manager worked out with all of them. That was part of their meeting.
They, they were, they were behind in submitting those fees to the city.
They had them at the rec center, right. But they had ever, each entity had been paying.
But, but, but they've turned the money over? I believe it has been now. I, I'll check on that. I know they were waiting on, they did some courts this past year and they were waiting on some reimbursements. And, and when that is funds came in, then they were going to get us taken care of, so. Question, was that $3,500 annually from each entity goes into a fund? But is that enough to do all these, rotation, all these tennis courts over a period of eight years? That's, yeah, in fact, that's, it is, so. That's a wonderful deal because.
I think it's a neat way to.
You know, it got, when it got bad, you know, then we, you know, city had to step in, you know. By doing it that way now, it's, everybody's got a piece of the action.
What about the two courts that are left at the Wilson Park? I don't see those, is that in with the?
Yeah, I don't believe those are.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, and I believe those probably, I think they get used for pickleball more than anything.
Yeah.
So we have to keep that one up, okay?
I've almost gone down several times because those cracks are so bad.
The earthquakes.
Double time that I've almost gone down.
I'll make a note of that, well.
Earthquakes.
Well, with regards to this resolution and knowing that it sounds like we're the last entity to approve it, I'd like to make a motion that we consider an ordinance authorizing the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, in conjunction with Kansas Unified School District 470, Cali County Community College, our Kansas City Recreation Committee or Commission, and A.C. Tennis Association to enter, to enter into an interlocal, interlocal cooperation agreement for the use and maintenance of tennis courts throughout our Kansas City.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, and I believe this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes. Item number three of new business.
Consider a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to accept a proposal from Recreation Resource Incorporated of Overland Park to purchase a polygon multi-rib pavilion for the Arkansas City Farm and Art Market as part of the Wilson Park Phase One Upgrades Project for an amount not to exceed $169,470.
Sure. Yes, so the prices on these structures are going up very quickly. Mike had reached back, so we got this initial proposal. And Mike reached out again for a bid on a little bit smaller structure with a, maybe adding some frame gutters and stuff. It increased to what, $20,000? Yeah.
$35,000, $30,000.
So. Cheapest it's going to get for a while. I read, I read that in.
Probably get a paper now.
$30,000 worth of steel.
It's included, and then it's got part of the grant money.
Part of the PJ Wilkins.
Well, this match the Wilson Park way it looks right now, I mean, is this the, the plan that we did, Andrew? I mean, that the, we had, we had.
Yeah, I have the image.
Yeah, I saw it in there.
I don't know what color it comes with. It, it's not as grand as the original, but it's farm or for what, it's still the same basic concept. Like I said, the farm or market, people are very pleased with it, excited to get it done.
But it can also be used for other things, Ocalala and different things like that, so it's not, yeah.
We're covering it, it's in place for 4/1st, which is one of the services that we did.
Yeah, this price, this doesn't include construction, does it? I mean, putting it out there.
That's not included in it.
No, it'll be in package.
Okay.
We'll have a contractor that will find the fourth flings that all be responsible for breaking our structure. Essentially another contractor will do the part of loss. But it may only be one, too. We haven't broken it out yet.
Okay. But this is, it's a steel part of the.
Steel and the store, and it's ready to go.
Okay.
The price is going up before the Suez Canal issue, so I can't imagine.
We've been working on Wilson Park for quite a while. I think it's time to take a step forward. I will move that we consider a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to accept a proposal from Recreation Resource Incorporated of Overland Park to purchase a polygon multi-rib pavilion for the Arkansas City Farm and Art Market as part of the Wilson Park Phase One Upgrades Project for an amount not to exceed $169,470.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, on to item number four.
Consider the first reading of the ordinance adopting the budgeted pay plan for 2021 and repealing ordinance number 2020-10-4519.
So to accommodate the restructuring in the HR department, we need to add a position that we, that wasn't previous to there. So that's what this is about, is adding an HR analyst position to accommodate those restructuring.
That's all it was, no change.
That's it. Well, I'm going to make a motion, we consider the ordinance of adopting, adopting the budget plan for, for 2021 and repealing the ordinance number 2020-10-4519.
Second, I think.
Motion made and seconded, and this will be a roll call vote, I believe.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Yes. Item number five.
Consider a resolution authorizing and directing the manager of Charlotte Field Airport Industrial Park to execute airport improvement plan, grant documents, and other instruments. There too, on behalf of the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, and City of Winfield, Kansas, as the participants in an interlocal agreement for the management and operation of Charlotte Field Airport Industrial Park by the power vested in, in by Article 12, Section 5 of the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
So this just allows Sean to execute the, the grants. And I have to continue to go back to the City of Arkansas City and the City of Winfield for things that have already been approved by the, by the, his board out there. So this, it just gives him the authority to move forward on these things. Well, that's just normally what we have to do on everything, on all these kind of grants and stuff. That the both cities, they got to be approved up there, then both cities approve it since it's a city, both cities own that deal. So by saying that, I make a motion that consider a resolution authorizing and directing the manager of Charlotte Field Airport Industrial Park to execute airport improvement plan, grant documents, and other instruments thereof on behalf of the City of Arkansas City and the City of Winfield, Kansas, as a participants in the interlocal agreement for the management and operation of the Charlotte Field Airport Industrial Park by the power vested by it in Article 12, Section 5 of the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote.
The roll call.
It is what? The roll call. Oh, it is?
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Sorry.
Motion passes unanimously. City manager updates.
Okay, so on your, on your desk up there, there is the Ark City Police Department's 2020 annual report. So if you have any questions, obviously, reach out to Chief Burr. If, if you'd like, if you'd like him to come in and give a presentation on, he's willing to do that to you, but. I'd like to hear from him down the road, you have him bringing in. Yeah. So that way we can ask questions, you know, we can look at it and then if we've got questions, we can ask him.
Eric.
Are we going to do this one? Are we done that one?
Yeah, that's right.
You had this?
Yeah. Do that next. What, oh, you want to do this now? Resolution. No. When you finish your updates, we'll do it.
Don't forget it.
Go next. I think they're stunning, some may still want to speak, so. There's a traffic safety committee this Friday at 10 a.m. at the water treatment facility. And there'll be also be a remote go-to-meeting option. We're, we're going to be presenting to the Rotary Club on, on Monday, discussing the how that we're working on the housing assessment tool, getting feedback from the Rotary Club. That'll be a great place because there's such a diverse group of people there, different, you know, careers and walks of life and stuff. So we'll do that at noon. Rise, Cali Health Coalition Meeting will be Tuesday, April 13th at 10 a.m. on Zoom. Again, there'll be a legislative committee meeting at 6 p.m. April 13th at Baden Square in Winfield. Of course, the next study session will be the April 16th at noon, and that'll be kind of the budget retreat. That'll be over at the water treatment plant this time. And then if you guys approve this resolution in front of you, we'll have another work session on the 23rd. And that's going to be to go over a fleet management program that we've been looking at as staff. Okay, the city budget retreat's going to be April, what, 15? 16. Friday from noon to 2:00 roughly, or approximately. That'll be at the water plant. And the Medical Center is having a golf tournament on April 17th at Great Life, and that starts at 8 a.m. So if you want to play a little golf and raise some money for them. And there'll be a bridal shower at the Burford on April 18th from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And you may have noticed the, they started waterline construction over there at the Rad Meeks area. So that's, that's on, on the move now. The, in the alley here with the, they did the potholing to locate the conduits that were existing. And so they should have a pretty good handle on what's there now. And they're working on plans on, you know, I, I think what they'll end up doing, if there's enough empty conduit, they'll just move that, the cable over to the other side, so, but we're still waiting to hear the outcome of that. But that is, they're all working on that. Is there a timeline on that? I mean, I mean, how long it's going to take to move this, so we get started on that now? It'll take a while.
It's much more extensive than they had originally thought it was. And so when everybody came together and they actually got down into, I think some of the merchants even had a chance to look down in there, and it's very extensive.
And then we got the swimming pool evaluation, a draft copy. And right now, I've got Tony and Deb reviewing it to see if there's anything in there that they don't agree with or think maybe needs to be changed. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have that to present to you guys so you can kind of see where, where things are at on, on the existing pool and maybe some options that we can look at for the future, so. That's all I've got.
Thanks, I apologize for skipping this resolution. I was out of here. So we'll go back to the resolution, and it has to do with the Enterprise Fleet Services. So in the next one, it would just be a public meeting. So. On April 23rd. Any questions? Not I would make a motion to consider a resolution authorizing a public meeting of the governing body to attend a city commission study session in the city manager's office at City Hall located at 118 West Central Avenue in Arkansas City, Kansas, at 12 p.m. on April 23rd, 2021.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Some people showed up later. Do you guys have anything you'd like to speak to the commission about? Come on, come on up, Roger, yeah.
Let's take this thing off, put some plug up.
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
Two things I want to talk to you about is the appearance of things. Just the accident that we had with the bus, that has become almost non-existent. Fact this in downtown Arkansas City. This week has been extremely, less week or so, has been extremely difficult to keep anything in entryways clean because there's so much sand, dirt, mud in our curbs and gutters in downtown Arkansas City that as soon as it drives out, it's in our door. It used to be, in my 54 years of being on that street there now, there was always a dedicated timeline that that street sweeper came downtown.
that that street sweeper came downtown and made, made his rounds. Louis was the operator for a number of years, and others, that has not occurred in quite a while. A couple of archalas ago, we were two days from archalala, and all the gutters were full of leads. We could not get anything other than, I'm not sweeping that street again, because the wind will just blow it right back in. Nick ordered it done, and it got done, so our visitors were greeted. There's an adamant, and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, because all these workers have got money to do. But unless this body has pride in that downtown, it's not gonna get any better, it's just gonna get worse. We can't do anything about the, I mean, we're, we're trapped there, they're rising our taxes fifty percent two years ago, eighty percent of the lot this year. They're just making it impossible to have a decent greeting to our visitors, and when customers start messing up their shoes, they've got, they dressed up to come to town to buy a new clarinet for their daughter, or a piano for their, for their wife, or whatever, and they gotta walk through mud on our paved streets. And I could walk around town and see that where there is no businesses, the gutters are pretty clean. There is an environmental problem with the wind currents as they are up in the three hundred block, where we are, probably more than anyone else, because you've got those long up, up crafts that are coming up, those big hills collecting down from Paris Park, and they do blow it in quite a bit. But a couple of times a week, we would be clean. I called Canyon three weeks ago, and I know that she talked to somebody, that makes sense. They're not doing it on purpose, so tell somebody, give them the order to do it, and we'd have pride in our downtown again. I wouldn't even be here if we still had all of the activities with, with sixty more merchants downtown. But even though there's not that many, there's a lot of us down there that rely on first impressions, and we would like to have decent-looking downtown, and especially for festivals, there has to be some kind of protocol that the commission, or whoever makes those decisions, is making, has as a policy, that if you're gonna invite people to your biggest event, you clean up your town, and you might have to do it twice if you have a little bit of storm. And there's just a lot of things, I took some pictures just for a come-up, they're not worth sending, because everybody already knows it. All you gotta do is walk, three hundred block is South Summit, walk the two hundred block is South Summit, one hundred block is South Summit, the one hundred block is North Summit. You'll see it, cans, fruit cans, fruit juice cans, there's four or five places where farmers or someone has come in after being out on a muddy road, maybe there's been rain or whatever, but you can tell exactly where every muddy tire was, because the mud's still there, six inches deep. And it's just something that I would like to, at request, that you look into, and help us keep it nice. I had, the, the year of archalala, I had, I just happened to be in Fallwell, they were having their festival, and they were sweeping their streets. So I sent a picture over to Nick, before I went back to our city, they were cleaning. But it's, it's just not on anybody's mind, except if you've got your front door. Yesterday, my store manager says, I cleaned that front entry eleven times. And you go outside to see, and there's just sand, two to three inches deep in the curves, all, all of it down that block, and it's elsewhere as well. So anyway, thank you for all the things you guys do, and thank city workers for it, but this is something that is a matter of pride for us on this street. The other thing I wanna thank you for is the alleyway project. Nice meeting with the engineer the other day in Virginia, where a bunch of came out, and we were talking to him, and I explained to him, I said, you know, I moved to this block in nineteen seventy-three. Well, Jenny moved here in the eighties, she was a brunette.
You didn't say that, did you?
Well, she pointed that I was too. Anyway, we thank you for that, that is gonna be a wonderful improvement, but it's going to be a lot of work, because I went down, I'm, I'm the one who went down there with the flashlight with the engineer. And there's sixteen conduits on the east side, and there's probably eight more clay ones on the west side, they can move them all. The other thing that's important, I think, for this body to know is, AT&amp;T is not going to make fiber optic available to any business in downtown Arkansas City. They're going to make us pay for it, because our choice last year was five hundred and fifty dollars a month, or two hundred dollars a month, but we had to sign up for satellite service and fiber optic service. The next day, the AT&amp;T guys get here, there is no fiber optic service available to us. They're not going to access those lines for the downtown businesses, you guys may be able to get them for a city, for the police department, or something like that, and they give you a dedicated line. But those of us that are having four-line telephone lines coming in, have Wi-Fi with Cox or whoever we're with, if we wanted to upgrade, those fiber optic cables are not available to us. They're not, that is not something that, it goes by us, and that's been the whole of, for three years, I'm getting our alleyway cleaned up, but maybe somewhere in negotiations, when AT&amp;T comes in and tells you how great they're doing, they're not. They're not doing anything except raising everybody's bills every year, and I, I'd like to see, if we've got fiber optic available here, I would have, it would help us in a lot of ways. The other thing I wanted to ask about, is there some kind of city policy that we're not gonna maintain our trash service, and our trash receptacles anymore?
Where at?
Anywhere.
Downtown Main Street?
Our, our trash, out, out.
Behind?
Yeah. Are they, are they still doing maintenance, or some stuff?
What do you mean?
Well, it used to be if they would come in with the machine and grab our, our dumpster and slam it down and knock the wheels off it, they'd come back and fix it. I've got one that's been broken for over two years, I'm not even really sure it's ours. We bought a new dumpster when we bought the, yeah, service guy in the building, it disappeared, and they found it at Paris, or at Wilson Park, and brought it back, but I think it's been changed again, but they're all beat up, and they're, they're just, I mean, that machine's pretty physical, and when it slams back down, it'll lock the wheels right off of it, but our, our dumpsters are pretty bad, and I just tried it up down the alleyway last night, like, and noticed that there's a lot of them there. We're all dedicated, invested, and committed to our Kansas City merchants. What we look like to our customers, and what they think of us, depends more on you than us sometimes, but if, if we could get some help on the thing that's with downtown, and if we could get some help on the dumpsters, that would be very helpful.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I'm going back to that fiber optics, somebody read this in just some random article, but there could potentially be translator down in the next couple of years regarding getting fiber optics to communities. And certainly, I'm looking at you, because you seem to know more about potential grants and most, but, I mean, I read, I thought that was one of the goals of trying, one of the plans coming out, that they're gonna try to.
Yeah, broadband is one of the areas you could spend the rest of your life, but there's a lot of guys who don't have the.
Yeah. And I don't know if that's even a potential thing, I, he just, that just came out of my, you know, thoughts there.
From, from my past city, and we were, had a lot of, you know, two, two fiber optic companies, I don't, I haven't seen that AT&amp;T and those folks, it's more for rural, I, so I don't know.
And we may not qualify, that was kind of my question there, too, so, just a thought, when he's talking about getting fiber optics, but nice to get it through all of the community, but, you know,
the, the entire community should have.
Yeah.
Fiber optics to their, to the door residential end, but it'll happen eventually, man.
Yeah.
To get on Roger's thing about the cleaning the downtown acres, is, are they on the schedule to go downtown, or do you know?
I'm gonna, we have a management meeting, you know, first thing in the morning, so I made notes, and we'll, we'll talk about that, so.
I think they probably used to years ago, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the staffing level is on that yet, so I'll, but I'll, we'll, we'll discuss this tomorrow or something.
It was a night shift, and all Louis got down, after all the parts went, he could come down and clean all the downtown, and a lot of areas other downtown. But I wouldn't see him until lots of times eleven o'clock, and he would usually be down, I could, I could see his dust dirt until three or four o'clock, somewhere north or south, but it really made our town.
Thanks. Anything else? None, I make a motion during the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Get up and head out.
Thanks, guys, thanks, Roger.